We are going to share with you some insight this morning about the state law, Matt's Safe School Law, in addition to comments from our elected officials and from our township supervisor, director of public safety with our first panel. We're going to try to be as brief as we can because our goal today is to share with you the movie Bully. And this bully movie project which has gotten national and international attention has become very important for all of our communities. In my role with crime prevention and the things that we do with all of our neighborhood watch groups working with our schools, this has been an issue that has been so critically important for us to address to not only assist our schools because the schools have been doing a tremendous job and because of the new state law there will be more requirements that the schools will be required to do, but also we as community, which is why this discussion is so important. We saw yesterday across the country a lot of the students particularly in the metro Detroit area doing a stand-up event that they were standing up to make a change. And it was great to see the students across all of those school districts go out into their football fields to put a message up that was caught on camera. But we are so excited about this effort today with our sponsors, with the Rave Cinemas and the Sam's Club personnel. And I'm going to bring them up at this time to say a real brief welcome and thanking you for your participation, but also we'd like to thank them. Please give them a round of applause. Mr. Kelly Mervin, who is the general manager here at Rave Cinemas.
I'm not used to this microphone. I can usually do this without it. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to Rave Cinemas. We really appreciate you coming out today. I just briefly want to thank Sam's Club for sponsoring this event and Pittsfield Township, especially the safety department. Without them, we would be nowhere. This building is an excellent venue for people to see movies. In fact, let me do a shameless plug. Starting on June 18th, come on back for our Free Family Film Festival. You can see free movies starting that week, every week for eight weeks, and it'll be at 10:00 a.m. Also, we have $5. Wednesdays, all shows on Wednesday are $5. So with that said, again, public safety, thank you very much. Without these guys, our venue wouldn't be what it is today. I hope you enjoy the show.
Thank you, Kelly. And our sponsors, Mr. Jeff Preston, general manager and staff. He will introduce Adam from Sam's Club.
Good morning. First off, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Coleman for the opportunity to partner with him on this event. We feel strongly that it's important as being part of the community, as a thank you, to give back to the community. So we'd just like to say thank you for what you have done for us in the community and allowing us to partner with the Pittsfield Township and put on an event like this and give back. So I just wanted to say thank you. I hope we get something out of this. I'm sure we will, and there's been a lot of preparation put into this, so I look forward to seeing the results.
Great. Thank you so much. Please give us again a round of applause for our sponsors. So appreciative of Sam's Club and Rave Cinemas. We're going to start this brief discussion with you this morning because of Matt's Safe School Law that was recently passed by the House of Representatives and the Senate. And one of our representatives who is here today, who is a co-sponsor of that legislation, Representative David Rutledge, we are so excited that he is here with us because he's going to give us some insight of not only the challenges that the elected officials had on a regular basis, but also with this particular legislation and how it all worked out. Representative Rutledge?
I would first of all like to say thank you to Mr. Coleman, but also special thanks to the township of Pittsfield, the supervisor, Mandy Graywall, and to the law enforcement there, and for community. Your presence here this day indicates the level of interest in this issue. I want to speak briefly about the law. It's Public Act 241 of 2011. The primary sponsor was my colleague, Representative Phil Potvin. You would think that, first of all, you wouldn't need a law to deal with an issue about relationships, this whole thing of bullying. But from the time I was in school to now, the issue has just really gotten blown a lot bigger than I ever experienced when I was in school. The legislation itself is not where I would like it to be specifically because left out of it is the coverage of cyberbullying and what I call bullying in the clouds. But nonetheless, it gives a good foundation and it's something that our school districts and our law enforcement can work with. My time here is very brief because others will share with you as well, but let me just put this in perspective. From the vantage point that I see and hear, and I think you experience on the ground, both students and parents, that there was an incident that occurred in October of 2011, not in this school district, well, in the Ann Arbor School District. In the lunchroom, two people sitting across from each other eating their lunch. Student A finishes up his lunch and he has ketchup that he put over his french fries. And so he takes the open package of ketchup, puts in a bag, and slides it across the table to student B sitting across the table. Student B says, "I'm not responsible for your trash," and pushes it with force back across the table to the point that the ketchup that was in the bag now hits student A's shirt and ketchup's all over his shirt. So student A starts to wipe the ketchup off. Student B leaves. Later on in the day, student A and B meet up in the bathroom, and a fight ensued because of ketchup. It just so happened that student A's buddy was with them in the bathroom, and as the fight unfolds, student A's buddy uses his phone and films the whole thing. Now, student A begins to get the best of student B. B runs out of the bathroom, straight down the hall, to the police officer's office and says, "You know, this kid's fighting with me." End. Long story short, the police officer now fills out a report after having interviewed both students. Student A is dismissed from school for five days. Student B has no suspension because the rules say if someone is the aggressor, you have a right to defend yourself. So in this situation, and based on the film that was taken by student A's buddy, this guy, you know, the school got a hold to it and said, "Okay, it looks like student A was the aggressor. No penalty for student B." And student B is the one that really pushed the ketchup so that it got on the shirt. This does not stop there. The report that the police took gets turned in to the prosecutor's office, the county prosecutor. County prosecutor looks at this and says, "It's a ketchup fight." Student B's parents say, "But look, my son was beat up on." County prosecutor says, looks at the report and says, "Okay, we'll file charges." Now, we've moved from ketchup fight to a suspension to a prosecution, and a court date has ensued. Just this past month, this goes charge, the student is charged with a serious offense of assault, a high level of assault. Case put before the judge, the judge looks at this and says, "But it was a ketchup fight. Why is this in front of my court?" Now, the end of this story has not been played out because it's in court. But let me tell you, I tell you this story, students and parents, because I want you to see how and understand how this thing of bullying can affect and how somewhere along the way, there are different points. There are at least three points in this story where this whole scenario could have been ratcheted down. And somebody said, "Hey, look, let's get these guys together and discuss this so that we can really clear up the animosity between the two." There could have been a point at the point where the police officer took the report. That was the point that some ratcheting down of this could have happened. At the point the prosecutor saw this and folded back into discussions with the school officials, there could have been some ratcheting down of this. But right now, there stands a student who potentially has his record marred for the rest of his life if this penalty stands and a conviction results from it. So, parents, students, this is serious business when you invade somebody else's space, when you don't treat others like you would have them treat you. This is serious business. I'm going to end this with this thought, and this thought plays over and over in my mind. It's a little line that comes from a poem called "If." It was written by Rudyard Kipling in the 1800s. "If," it talks about what it takes to be a man. If you do a whole series of things, then you can call yourself a man. But I think it speaks to a woman as well. The first stanza says, "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you." That's the first threshold to being a man. There always are going to be times when people are going to come at you or say things about you, but if you can keep your head when others are losing theirs, then that's the test. That's the test of a man and a woman.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Mr. Rutledge. Good comments. Good comments. Question real quick.
Can I just say when you said about ratcheting the situation down, my initial thought was ratcheting the situation down events due to B not touching the tray and just saying, "You're responsible for your own trash." And that's where it appears, we need to teach our kids to keep their hands to themselves and keep things to themselves and just verbalize it and walk away. That's ratcheting it down from the beginning.
That's the point that I missed. You're absolutely correct. In the first instance, that's correct.
Good point. Thank you so much. And what's so unique about this discussion today as we prepare to see this movie because this legislation that we have just, we are one of 48 states now that have legislation. And we're going to be sharing that information with all of our families here in the township, and we've been in our schools talking with our students about it because there are requirements for our schools and requirements for the community, there are requirements for law enforcement. And as we hear from our elected official that's in Lansing working with our other elected officials, it's important for us to hear from the local level, our township supervisor, Ms. Mandy Graywall.
Thank you, Richie, and thanks specifically to your staff. Thank you, Richie, and thank you also to Representative Rutledge who is in Lansing working in a bipartisan fashion to make sure that laws such as these are passed because I think our goal here is to create safe and just communities. The work that he does then gets translated back over here to the local level. And in Pittsfield Township, I have to say that we have a very strong commitment to ensuring safe and just communities. And I think we have our neighborhoods. We have specific communities that are formed predominantly of our youth. Our youth are the leaders. You are our stars for tomorrow. So no conversations can occur with regard to communities without first talking about our youth, which is why I'm very excited to be here and be part of this panel because it is dialogues like these that will get us to a place where we can create those safe and just communities. In particular, from some of the experience that I have in the past and the research that I've done, the role of media, I believe, is very critical in our lives and in creating a culture that we have today, whether it is popular culture or sort of the culture of the marginalized. Media is the central force that is determining what that culture becomes for our youth for today and for tomorrow. So it is through movies such as these and TV shows that start talking about previously taboo topics and make them legitimate topics of conversation around the coolers for the adults, for the parents, around the cafeterias for the youth. And I think it is through discussions and dialogues such as these that we push forward and create those safe and just communities. My role as the supervisor and really the role of the Department of Public Safety is to make sure that we then take these tools that have been provided through the state and the lawmakers to put those fully into force. And that is a commitment that we have in Pittsfield Township. It's a very strong commitment that we have. And again, really going back to the focus on media and why we're here today in the panel that we've created today is really to talk about storytelling. I believe we've used storytelling through the ages to pass along morality and values to the next generation, and I believe our storytelling now occurs through media, whether it is social media, TV, videos, whatever the case may be. And so it is through movies and projects and dialogues such as these that we are going to coalesce, we are going to come together, we are going to start talking about our different viewpoints, whether it is, you know, say that we have to stop at point A and stop it from getting to point Z, or whatever the case may be, and what role each stakeholder plays. And so we are just here, and myself as a supervisor of Pittsfield Township, and really here to say that we are here to support you in those conversations, and we want to be partners with you in making Pittsfield Township specifically a completely safe and just community. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. And as we do this big picture and we work with our schools and the things that we are addressing right now with our schools and the new laws with law enforcement, our director of public safety, Matt Harshberger, who is here also, is going to share with us information not only about the new roles for us as the agency, but also the big picture of the things that we are going to be required to work with our families as these are brought from our schools and from our communities. Because this isn't just school. It's on our playgrounds, this is in our community here at malls, it could be anywhere that we have to deal with the investigation of an issue. One of the things that's also important for our young people to remember, as social media, as our supervisor just said, one of the studies I just recently read from the Pew study did a deep root web search on a junior at a college in the New Jersey area. 14,000 pages, one student they found had put up on the internet. Employers are looking at information. Nothing is deleted. Everything is there. Director Harshberger.
Thank you, Richie. It's on? Yep. Good morning. Just a couple of things that I wanted to hit on real quick from a law enforcement perspective. The statute that was passed primarily deals with school districts and the responsibility with bullying and preventing it really in the end. It is a community problem. It really kind of alludes to that a lot in the statute, that it goes beyond the responsibility of the schools. It really is a law enforcement, a parent, a student group, school, faculty responsibility. Really, it incorporates everybody, as kind of Richie was saying, in the community to resolve this issue of bullying. Two personal experiences that I had. I have three kids. My one son, who is now at Pioneer, was 12 years old at the time, and he had been getting bullied at the bus stop. And on a couple of different occasions, actually, and it turned out that one of the two kids was a so-called friend of his, I couldn't quite figure that one out, but he was doing what another guy was doing that he was hanging out with, and he was pushing my son down. And not really assaulting, even though pushing down is kind of an assault, but it had a huge impact on my son. I mean, I could tell when he was coming home from school, it just wasn't the same. He's typically a very happy, smiling boy, loves doing his homework, things of that nature. And for about a week, week and a half, I started asking him that he was getting bullied at a bus stop. Obviously, meeting a police officer, I just took action in my own hands and I went down. I knew one parent. I was the soccer coach, and that's why they were friends. They were on the same soccer team. And so I went over and talked to mom. We had a great conversation and we resolved that incident and never happened again. The other student, who was really kind of the leader of the two, I went over to his house too and didn't know him or his parents or anything, but very cordially talked to mom, and she talked to dad, who was at work. He called me, and we resolved it. Just a very simple conversation between the parents. Schools never got involved. So it's a case in point where law enforcement, even though I'm a police officer, but law enforcement did not get involved. That was a direct contact. We saw what was going on. We ended it very quickly. No other incidents. The kids are fine now. They get along, no problems. I don't really know why and I don't really care why it all started because sometimes it doesn't make any sense. There's no reason behind it, but it just can't happen. You have to bring it to a quick conclusion when you see it occurring. And that's the one thing that I wanted to talk about, that bullying itself, per the law that was just passed, was not criminalized. There's no penalty for it. I understand in talking with Representative Rutledge that there might be something coming down the pike along with cyberbullying, but right now there's not. So bullying in itself is not a crime, so to speak, but there are acts of bullying such as assault, that we talked about with the fight that took place, harassment using phones. There are a multitude, hate crime, things of that nature, that are serious, that you do need to call the police department on. We will come out and take a report. We will conduct an investigation. I agree wholeheartedly with the comments that were made about de-escalating. Every given possibility that you can de-escalate a situation like this from getting it, compounding it, exacerbating it, making it into something that it really doesn't need to be, that's great, but when you have a crime take place, you need to file a police report. We need to get involved because we don't want to see it get worse. That's what we are there for you to do. Even if it involves a situation where you just want us to come out and talk to a student, a parent, whatever the case may be, if we determine that it's not a crime, or even if you know that it's not, it was just an exchange of words or name-calling or something pretty simple, but you can see it's impacting your son or daughter, we have absolutely no problem whatsoever getting involved. We won't do a criminal report. We'll just simply come out, we'll talk to the parents, and we'll try to help out. If you do not feel comfortable in contacting the other family, I'm not advocating that. Call us, we'll do it, and we'll be very professional about it. We have handled these situations for years and years and years, and that's what we are there for you to do. In addition to that, kind of a segue, we have a school officer who's in the Celine Schools. We run programs with all the schools at Pittsfield Township. We are interfacing with all of our schools in Pittsfield Township. We have a great relationship with all of our schools. Tiffany Small here actually is contracted with the Celine Schools, and she can talk about incidents where she has actually taken intervention because she interfaces so well with the school administration and the student population and the teachers too, that a lot of this stuff is prevented right in the hallways. As she's seeing it, she's hearing about it from students, they're coming to her and they're talking about it with her. So it doesn't rise to the point where it becomes a crime or some other type of discipline needs to happen. She's able to intervene and resolve the incident on the fly. So last thing for me, if you ever have a question about a bullying incident, you just need some advice, you want us to come out, if you want us to come out, there was a crime, you can call dispatch and we'll come out. If you still want to call me, and that was my point, feel free. I have an email address right on our website. You can just call the Department of Public Safety. I'm there for you. The deputy chief is always there, our staff. I have a CPU officer over here, Kevin Cassett. He's always there to help out. Tiffany Small is always here to help out. We are there for you again. Call us, we will come out, we'll talk about your situation, we'll arrive at some type of resolution that everybody is happy with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, director. As a police officer here in Pittsfield for just about 10 years now, I have the knowledge within this community that helps me in the high school, specifically in Celine High School. And since I've been there, I've been able to see a few different things. First of all, a point I need to address, bullying in and of itself is a giver, a receiver, and at least one, two, three, or 10 witnesses or bystanders. And the point I want to say is, for all of you that may have seen something that didn't quite feel right, that felt like you felt bad for somebody or frightened for somebody, I urge you, come forward and ask somebody if this is a situation that you should let go or get help with. Because by and large, it's many of those students who come to me, and I'm able to go to the person who's receiving these things happening to them and ask them, "How do you feel about that? Is this something I can help with?" Very often, we have mediations. We just sit down. I bring the receiver in, the person who's getting these kinds of comments or behaviors to them, in a separate room, the giver, the person who's making these kinds of comments or behaviors. And then I ask them, "Why are these things happening and how does it make you feel?" We have an administrator come in and we sit down, all four of us, and potentially more. If it's necessary to have a parent there because this is something that's occurring outside the school as well, then we have the parents come in. But very often, we work it out right there in a private room and talk about our differences. And very oftentimes, that's it. Nothing else happens after that. It's really important to make sure that we open up those lines of communication and we as adults help support these growing teenagers to help resolve their own difficulties and disagreements within the communities. And those bystanders, it's important for them that they feel comfortable talking to a police officer, talking to an administrator, talking to a teacher, or any other trusted adult. And so that's an important role that I want to make sure I'm playing in the schools as well as the other school resource officers and the other officers in the area that come out to the schools to respond to calls or go out to the homes to respond to calls. It's difficult for us as police officers to bridge that gap in relationships with teens. They're often, all they know is, police officers pull you over, write you tickets, and arrest you. They don't have any other contact with law enforcement. So it's so important to make sure every opportunity you have, you get to know that police officers can help also. So hopefully, that's the role that being a police officer in the school that I can help with and also help with the communication aspect of it. Thank you, Richie, very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you so much. We will have a lot of information at our township website at Pittsfield-MI.gov. We're going to put the summary of the legislation. We have it in a PowerPoint that we've been doing with our schools and our students. Pittsfield Township feeds into the Ann Arbor Schools, Celine, Mylan, as well as our charter schools that are in the area. And this is something that's important for all of our schools, and we work with school resource officers in all of those school districts in addition to what Officer Small does for the Celine High School. So these issues that we see are universal because everyone who's on social networks and things that are going on, they are everywhere between text messaging, and I know my son, who's, sometimes I look at the bill and he's getting six, seven thousand text messages a month, and talking with some of the other students, they said, "That's all." One young lady at Clegg Middle School told me at one of the meetings, she gets 15,000 text messages a month. And I just, "How do you sleep?" You know, this is just unbelievable. 15,000, and her mother said, "Yes, she does." It's unbelievable. So that's something that's very real with how instant these things can pass and go along to other students. We got about a minute. If you'd like to ask our panelists any questions before we bring our students up because we do want to get to the movie. If not, thank you again for your comments. Please go to the township website. We will be dispersing more information. Thank you, Representative Rutledge, Supervisor Graywall, Director Harshberger, and Officer Small. Thank you so much. We're going to have our student panel come up right now. And again, we'd like to thank our sponsors, Sam's Club and Rave Cinema, for all of their efforts with bringing this to our community. We also have our personnel who are outside at the resource table. We have a lot of information that was ordered that didn't unfortunately make it, but we'll make that available in our efforts with bringing this to our community. We also have our personnel who are outside at the resource table, we have a lot of information that was ordered that didn't unfortunately make it, but we'll make that available in our schools. And now we have our students that are coming up, and we're going to get right into our student discussion, and I'm going to have them introduce themselves, and the way we're going to do this, is I am going to ask them to tell us briefly, not only about their concerns, but why is this issue important?
Hello everybody, I'm Mo Man, Multicultural Academy. I come from a small school environment where bullying is not that big of a problem, but we go through everyday struggles where there's always that one kid who's getting teased, or that one kid who's getting made fun of. And I think that we should make the disciplinary actions more severe, and that's a good way to put a stop to it.
Hi, I'm Chase Pye from Lincoln Middle School, and there's not as much bullying in Lincoln, but I just moved there from, I just moved to Lincoln from Mylan, and there was a lot of bullying there, and I think that they should make more disciplinary, more disciplinary actions against it, so it'll help stop.
Hello, my name is Sadie Henry, and I'm from Cassinico High School. And as witnessing bullying, I hope that after showing this movie that we'll be more comfortable, children will be more comfortable by telling their parents or adults that they are being bullied, and this will help it.
Hi, I'm Julie from Celine, and I, as Officer Small said, there's always the giver, there's the receiver, but there's also all the witnesses. And I'm a big advocate in having the peers stand up. You have a bunch of people who are always witnessing, and then we always focus on the victim or the harasser, but there's a bunch of students who have the power to stand up, and if we can get those students to stand up, then maybe there'd be less problems in the school. And if we kind of nip it at a younger age, like the middle school level, I think that would help our cause a lot, because honestly, middle school's probably the roughest time in a lot of students' lives, and things get pretty catty there, to be honest, so I think that would help a lot in preventing bullying.
I'm Clint Lafferty from Mylan, and also as our last speaker said, that she sat down with both the harasser and the receiver. That's actually what we do. Shayna, who isn't going to talk next, is actually in the same program as I am, peer mediation, where if somebody's having, or two kids are having some sort of problem, teachers can fill out the form as well as students. And we sit down and we just kind of like talk them through the problem, we don't really take sides or anything, it's a nonjudgmental, non-biased environment where they sit down, talk their problems out before it escalates to violence. So, programs like that, I think that more schools need to have, and just about as everybody else has said, the disciplinary action for these sorts of things needs to be more severe than just a slap on the wrist for most.
I am Shayna, I'm from Mylan High School, and as Clint said, we're in a group called Peer Mediation. We help kids to solve their conflicts before it goes to an administrator or a police officer. We, there's a lot of instances where two kids come in, and one has been, you know, talking about the other or whatnot, and we kind of, our job is to stop the problem at, right as it's beginning. So like I said, it doesn't have to go to an administrator. And our group also promotes a lot of trust in peers. We have a lot of kids, a lot of freshmen, I'm a senior, and there's a lot of freshmen that come in that have trouble their first year of high school, and it allows for a lot of trust, like I said, through their peers, and allows them the communication to know that they have someone there to help them when they are being victimized, or just having trouble with friends or whatnot. But I, I really think that bullying is a huge problem in our schools, and it needs to be stopped, or something needs to happen, and that's where me and Clint come in, and all the other students, we try and help stop it and prevent it.
I'm Brianna, and I'm from Huron. And although we like to portray Huron as like a good school, there are like bullying and other altercations that also prevent us from having that little goal of having a good school. So it's like, students at our school, they like to like talk about each other. And the thing is, everybody like knows about challenge day and all this other stuff, and like most of those people that are bullying, and all the receivers, they go to challenge day for that one day, and they make a goal to say like, I will make this change, I will stop doing whatever I'm doing, I'll make this person happier, or try to like be a better person, like if you see somebody down, you give them a hug, or you talk to them, see what's going on. But like, just for that one day, it'll work, and then like after, like that day is over, everything is out the door. Like, you see people still talking about those same people that you apologized to that same day. And now like it's to the point where, okay, you apologize so many times, and you're still doing the same thing, it's a whole nother problem. So like, people are fed up, and change is supposed to come, but like, change hasn't really resolved anything as they say that they will change. So, thing I'm saying is, like at Huron, we need more administrators that will not be biased, because like we have a lot of jocks that are bullying younger people. And with them being biased, they're going to like, like defend that jock instead of defending the person that's being tortured by this jock. So, I think that instead of having biased administrators, have another administrator that will be a mediator between this problem. So we won't have administrators defending bullying instead of preventing it from happening.
Great, thank you so much. Give the students a round of applause, please. We, we know how challenging this is, is to have this discussion, because we have to have it at the community level, we have to have it with our students, we have to have it at all disciplines, and this is the challenge that we have, and which is why when Lee Hirsch, this documentary that we're about to see asks us to do what we're starting this with today, is to first have some dialogue, not running from the problem, but looking at it from a realistic perspective. We're looking at it right now, the statistics are showing 11 million students bullied every year. The numbers are staggering when you look at all of the various informational pieces that are put up on the websites. We would like to just give a couple of minutes, if you've got questions for our students, because we're going to get right to this film here right now, if you've got questions, please ask them right now, for our students, any questions from our students? Yes ma'am, we're up in the top.
So, what are some of the solutions, as we currently see this in the world, what are some of the solutions that you can take?
What are some of the solutions, I mean, part of that question, what are some of the solutions that we see with, how will it work? What are some of the solutions that could be recommended right now? Any comments from our students? Sure.
I was actually going to ask if I could say this too, one of the main things that I would say to be able to fix it is, it's not really a problem that you're going to, everybody just wants to walk into school one day, and it's just like everything's changed, it's just like, you know, nobody really has to do anything about it, but that's not how it's going to be. Everybody single, like singularly has to work on it. You can't just walk in and it's going to be a huge change, you have to do it one by one. And I was going to tell a story, like my grandpa told me a story one time about, an old man walked down to the beach and saw a girl on the beach, and it looked like she was throwing something into the water, and the tide was going down, she was throwing starfish into the water. And he said, what are you doing? There's absolutely no way you're going to be able to save all the starfish on the beach, you can't make a difference. So she picked up another one, threw it in the ocean, and said, I made a difference for that one, didn't I? Every single person has to do it, it's, it's not going to be one giant change, it's going to have to be a long drawn out group effort.
Thank you, so, so well. Yes ma'am, comment, question right here.
Yeah, so I was wondering if Huron has a peer-to-peer group, and also if any of the students need to address bystanders, the whole Smith culture?
They do have peer, but it doesn't seem like many people are coming to peer actually to work things out there, usually going there to skip, you know? So like, it's not too many problems that are being resolved by peer. Like, peer are there to try to help someone, but most of the people that's coming in there, they're usually just going in there to take a nap or something like that. So, usually things are trying to be worked out, they don't get worked out, and then it ends up into altercation outside of the school, and the police aren't involved and everything else, it's too late to work it out. So, it would be helpful to have like actually people that want to work it out, but it's some people that just choose not to work it out, and just deal with their friends, trying to egg them on, and like sometimes they don't have the right type of friends to like, say, don't do it. They're like, okay, you whooped that person, but like, it's not, it shouldn't be like that, you know, you're supposed to have like supportive friends to say, hey, you want to stay in school, you don't want to like jeopardize your school record just to get in college, you want to like be productive instead of like just going back to old ways. So like, peer, it should be that way, but people don't go to peer like that.
We don't exactly have a peer-to-peer group, or we do, but it's not really aimed towards that right now, but something within our SAD program we have, is we perform skits for, it's actually kindergarten through adults, there's a variety of different topics we cover. One of the elementary schools, our school is a great, it's called the No Place for Hate Program, and it's kind of a program run through all of our elementary schools, and the high schoolers specifically participate in that by going and performing skits around the holidays, and it's like Grinch themed that we do, because it's developmentally appropriate for that age. But we do that at the elementary schools, then going through fifth grade, we teach peer resistance, and that's mainly aimed towards like drugs and alcohol, but also bullying, it teaches people how to stand up to their peers. And then once you get to the middle school level, which it's really crucial that we do this at, we have bullying harassment skits, and we go there each year in the fall time, and we have, it's about an hour-long presentation, and we have skits showing examples of them, and teach kids basically how to stand up against it. And it just goes all the way through high school, and it's a great program that even within the SAD program, we have a lot of peers that we can trust, and we are given the opportunity to discuss it with each other, and we have a great student assistance coordinator who helps us connect with our peers, and that's how we prevent a lot of it within our little community there.
Great, thank you. Please give our students a round of applause. We will have a lot of information, a lot of, all of our schools have this information regarding the guide for the Bully Project, the movie project, in addition to information that, on all of the vouchers that I sent to you, there's several links that are there. We are going to release our students, because I know a couple of them actually get, kind of could get ready for their prom, I'm sorry, you had a question? Okay, right here.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you talk about people with bullying, is there something to actually show the bullying? Because I don't know, bullying's bullying for a reason, they've been hurt, they've been victims, is there something to deal with? What causes the bullying to actually blow, or what starts that bullying process?
There, there are a number of programs that are being looked at, and I know that a number of our schools are, there are a lot of challenges right now with budget cuts and things like that, but we do have some great counselors, and we do have some great ideas that are being shared at a variety of levels, to look at what can we do to help that child who is involved with the bullying, or what can be done to help identify those concerns on a basis that, these are the things that you're doing to hurt others, and for the students and the individuals involved, to realize that the more that they get others involved and think that it's okay, that the culture of the environment of the school and in the community, that's what this change is about. That's what this project is about, is to look at alternative ways in order for communications, for teasing and taunting, how do we curb it? We're going to see that here in just a minute, what this movie represents with some of the solutions that were recommended that you will see in the movie, but as well as ongoing dialogue about things that are happening. Officer Small?
If I can also make a comment, that's kind of what the purpose of doing mediation is, so we can try and find out why it is that this is occurring. And in that discussion, if there is a topic that comes up that that, up under needs help with, then we refer to the appropriate resources, be it their guidance counselor, be it something that may be outside the community and parents need to see. So that is the purpose of doing mediation, where you meet with each one individually, and then bring them together. Thank you for the question.
Great, good question. Let's do this at this time, please, one more time for our students, we're going to release them at this time. We're going to ask our movie operators to prepare, we're going to move all of the equipment that's up here in front. My name is Rich Coleman, I appreciate all the parents, some who thought we're going to start the movie right off the top, we wanted to get this discussion into the mix first, because what we're going to see from the movie is going to even challenge us further. What are you going to do now? We've heard the community, we've heard the concerns, we've heard where we are at right now with our students in our community, but it's taking it one step further. We've got a lot of information that we're going to be sharing, please feel free, for those of us who stick around, we'll be here after the movie as well, because we're going to set up a camera so we can get that feedback from you, so that we can also submit this to the national project. Thank you again so much, my name is Rich Coleman, I've been your host here today, we're so appreciative of each of you who are here, we hope that our sponsors, thank our sponsors Sam's Club and Ray Cinemas to help sponsor and bring this event to our community. Again, thank you so much, students. And thank you so much for participating, and so many of our families who came out today to the Bully Movie Project here at the Ray Theater. Again, my name is Rich Coleman, we've been the hosts for the event today, we'd like to thank our township supervisor, Mandy Graywall, our state representative, Mr. Rutledge, for being a part of our panel discussion, and all of our students, our chief director of public safety, Matt Harshberger, and our school resource officer, and all of our students from the various high schools that came out to the event today. We had probably about 250, 270 parents and children that were here at the Bully Movie Project today, that participated in this event, and what we're excited about is that the discussion after this movie, we're going to participate as a number of the requests to get information and follow-up about the Bully Movie Project, as well as what can families do, what can schools do, even more, to really address this issue at the schools. Our goal today was to bring this to our community, so that we could have community discussion, that's the intent of Mr. Hirsch and the movie and the whole documentary, is to have that community-wide discussion. The schools do a tremendous job, but we as parents, we as community, have to do more as well. We're going to be sending out information regarding Matt's Safe School Law, if you'd like to get a copy of that legislation, we have it in a PowerPoint, we have it in a PDF file that we can send out to you, you can hit me at ColemanR@Pittsfield-MI.gov. Again, we're going to have a lot of information that we're going to post on our township website, at Pittsfield-MI.gov. We'd like to thank Ray Cinemas, Cinema for the ability to have this viewing here today, as well as Sam's Club, our sponsors, club number zero, six, six, seven here at Ypsilanti, a partner here in Pittsfield Township that helped make this happen for our community today. Again, my name is Rich Coleman, thank you so much for all of the participation, hope you enjoyed this presentation, look for more, we do have to continue this discussion. The Bully Movie Project is our first step of many that we've had, but ongoing in such a unique way about this issue, so we hope that everybody has gained something from this, if you didn't see it today, you'll see it at another time. Thank you so much, again, my name is Rich Coleman, we'll see you at the next episode. Bye bye.